Everyone, it is February 6, 2023, here 7:00 PM at the City Council Chambers for the regular meeting of the City Council. I'll call the meeting to order and entertain a roll call.
It's actually March 6. I see it's a title.
Oh, it is March 6. Reading it right off, so yeah, March 6 already.
Arco, Arco.
That's okay. Entertain the roll call, please, Carla.
You bet. Goldthor, Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkhouse.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Kangus.
Present.
Rothie.
Present.
Schneider.
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll rise with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Baker, everyone. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I will move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
motion by Drinkhouse, second by Rothie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Section E is the approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the February 6 regular meeting minutes and the February 20th, 2023, regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Section F, welcome in our guest councilperson for the month of March, Amy Seegers, at the invitation of Councilwoman Belfer.
This is Amy Seegers. She owns a business here. She has, she lives here in Waverly, right outside the city limits, right? And has students here at WSR, so I don't know if she likes to listen in and hear what we have to say here, so. Anything else you want to add? No. I have three kids in the school, one graduated. We have some rental property in town. I come here in town and live about a half mile outside of city limits, so.
All right. Thank you for joining us, and feel free to engage with us. Thank you. Next section up is presentation of certificates of appreciation. The council recognizes board and commission members who have exited their service, Mr. Matthew Moore and Mr. Nana Quayco for the Human Equity and Diversity Commission, and Jane Walzen for the Airport Commission. We have certificates. If you'd like to meet me at the podium. Thank you very much, sir. There's that one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If either of you have any words you'd like to share in appreciation or comments, feel free to do so. Otherwise, I appreciate your service to the community.
I just want to say thank you very much. It was a pleasure to serve as chair of the Human Equity and Diversity Commission, so yeah, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, second to what Nana said. Thank you for the opportunity to serve Waverly in this capacity. It's a great honor, and it was a difficult decision to make, but for my health, I needed to step away. But just thank you for your support and continued efforts to make Waverly an even better place for all populations to live. There's, there's still quite a bit of work left to do, but the commission is motivated and ready to take on those challenges. So again, thank you for your support. We appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you, thank you. All right. We'll move into section H, the public hearing section. Item 1, this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on ordinance 1116, amending sewer rates, charges, and minimum rates. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Have we received any written or oral comments, Carla?
We have not, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any public comments from anybody that has joined us this evening? See, nobody rise. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move that we postpone the third and final reading of ordinance 1116, amending sewer rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal year 2324, and resetting the public hearing for March 20, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Rothie. Council discussion or input from staff?
Well, as you were made aware, we had some publication issues with the hearings, and not all of them were able to be published as they should have been going forward, so we have delected to republish, get them done correctly. And normally, they would proceed the budget anyway. This will allow that to line up as it would have had we not moved the budget. So with all the chaos kind of happening with the budget this year and legislature, everything's been shifting, just kind of lost in the fold, so. But we have them ready to be republished. These first three will be done, then on March 20 instead of tonight.
Anything further? Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
We, I have had Jen change that to voice votes because it's not.
Oh, okay. I just have a real close audit. All in favor of the postponement of the third and final reading and resetting of the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 2, this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing of ordinance 1117, amending the water rates and minimum charges for water usage. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and following, the following action will be considered. Any written or oral comments, Carla?
No, Sir, Your Honor.
Any public comments for this side on this evening? See, nobody rise. We'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I will move we postpone the third and final reading of ordinance 1117, amending the water rates and minimum charges for water usage, and resetting the public hearing for March 20, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Belfer. Council discussion, I believe it follows the same suit as before.
Yes, sir.
So with that, unless there's any other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Third item is, this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing of ordinance 1118, amending solid waste rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal year 2324. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Any written or oral comments?
No, Sir, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any public comments? See, nobody rises once again. We'll entertain a motion after closing the public hearing.
I'll move that we postpone the third and final reading of ordinance 1118, amending solid waste rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal year 2023 to 2024, and resetting the public hearing for March 20, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Kangus. Any council discussion, and following suit? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on ordinance 1121, amending Chapter 100 zoning of the Waverly City Code by amending Section 100.28. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Any written or oral comments this evening?
No, Sir, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any public comments? See, nobody rise. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the second reading of ordinance 1121, amending Chapter 100 zoning of the Waverly City Code by amending Section 100.28.
Second.
Motion by Drinkhouse, second by Schneider. Council discussion?
Now, as I recall, this was the sort of thing where previously they needed the kind of special permission. They would have all these hearings. I don't remember if it was applying a zoning or adjustments. And this is basically to streamline that, so they don't need to go through the committee. Is that a correct understanding?
Primarily, yes. Because what they had to do is go before the P and Z and then go before the sort of adjustments, so it was quite a process. And we're starting to get quite a few of these applications, and the ones that completely fit all of the requirements, it didn't seem necessary to go through that process.
Thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Kangus.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Goldthor.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero. The second reading of ordinance 1121 is approved. Next up is public comment for items not on the agenda. Please leave your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Are there any public comments this evening from anyone? See, nobody rise. I do want to point out one thing. Is Jane from the Airport Commission, did we know if she was coming this evening? No? Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure that we weren't overlooking that. Next up is the consent calendar. For the following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council of public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item 1 is setting the public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 budget for March 20, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall. Item 2 is a pay request from Two McClure Engineering for the reconstruct South Tea Hangar Taxi Lane project in the amount of $6,593.50. Item 3 is a pay request to WHKS and Company for WPCF improvements, construction phase engineering services, in the amount of $14,208.32. Item 4 is a pay request to McClure Engineering for the construct taxiway connector project in the amount of $6,481. Item 5 is a pay request to WHKS and Company for tail race wall removal in the amount of $2,166.40. Item 6 is the corrected pay application number 20 from Brighter Construction Incorporated for WPC facility improvements. Item 7 is a Class C retail alcohol license for Get Roasted Coffee Company. Item 8 is a special Class B retail native wine license for Wild Carrot. And item 9 is the ownership update for Bremer Brewing Company. Entertain a motion to approve.
I will move approval of the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. Council discussion, if any?
The tail race removal invoice, was that just for initial kind of assessment?
They're starting to work on the permitting, and 7G's are subset to get the permitting done, and they're looking at trying to figure out how it's going to happen, so I'll have to coordinate that with the bridge replacement project, the DOT as well, so they're orchestrating the entire thing, so that's what this is starting to do.
Well, that, at all, with the bridge being pushed back, we can still get all of the dollars in the, in the next budget. I remember us saying that, but that seems kind of far out there.
Yeah, about the three years to expend anything through construction like that, purchase in 18 months, and so if they go ahead and remove the tail race in that window, you'll still have plenty of time to exhaust the funds that were necessary for this, so it is completely legitimate to do that.
Okay.
Excellent. Anything further? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Section K, regular business. Item number 1 is Resolution 23-33, the preliminary resolution for a project for the construction of public sidewalks on infill lots 2023. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-33, preliminary resolution for a project for the construction of public sidewalks on infill lots 2023.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. Council discussion?
I appreciate that this was rewritten. It's very organized, easier to understand, helpful to see, sort of to do triaging, excuse me, on which, which lots need private benefit versus public benefit, which lots are developers, which lots are privately owned, and being just held and not developed, and which are relatively new and potentially exempt. So I appreciate the work from staff on that. It's helpful.
We tried again. Last time, we had a good summary, it was just hard to get it out there, and Bill did a tremendous amount of work on this to kind of revamp this, so it is broken out into segments, so we have a little better understanding. As you see the maps there, and if you'd like Bill to walk through each of the scenarios and what we're looking at, the logic behind it, we certainly can. We tried to kind of number each category, as you look at the staff summaries, what you're dealing with, whether it's lots from developers, or lots that were acquired for a larger backyard, or, you know, you see the scenarios listed. Because for quite a while, we were very familiar with the sidewalk program we had existing, where you'd go through, we'd identify broken sidewalks, cracked sidewalks, do you replace them, have them replaced, assess to the homeowner what it was. This is that. These are vacant lots, no sidewalk. It's an infill project completely, and the law is different than what it was. Is this correct? There's a private-public benefit that has to be established, and if you approve this as it is, we tried to make recommendations, talk through Bill, kind of what we felt was fair on some of these. They can still push back, still follow complaints, so to speak, can get to court, but the first step is this, to decide, do we move forward and try and replace these lots with these sidewalks, or are they not there currently? So I don't know if it'd be helpful that Bill walked through each scenario, kind of what you're looking at, your maps.
I think it would be, especially for people who might be watching or listening, especially since it was added fairly late.
If you would, Bill.
So the first section of lots are the lots still owned by the developer and not developed. These are subdivisions that have been around at least six years, the three that are mentioned here, so there's actually 11 lots in that category. Five of those are owned by S&amp;D Development, and High Point 2, four are owned by BNKD and Stonehaven 5, and two lots are owned by BNKD and Prairie Park 2. So you look at the maps that I gave you. The first one is obviously the Stonehaven 5, and you can see what the 2121 resolution basically gave us, a situation where the two on each side of the two houses that were built recently would qualify, and the other side, there's three lots in a row, so it would not under that 21.21 resolution. You go to the next page, it's the two lots in Prairie Park. There are two lots below it, but they are owned by individuals, and I think they've been, I guess the one's next to a field, but the one is owned by an individual, or individuals who haven't owned it for at least two years yet, so that's why they.
So that lot, is it 509 with the number 1, it's kind of on the corner? Are they going to do, are we planning on sidewalks all the way around, or just on the one edge?
Well, generally, everyone's done on both sides.
Okay, so it would be all the way around?
Yeah.
If you looked at the street to the west, you'll see them on both sides, and they're scrubbing into a future subdivision we're hoping to have, so it would be the same thing.
Makes sense.
They could choose how to position their house too, because they could actually go off the clover lane instead of.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
I actually have a question. So if some of those lots sit empty, who maintains the sidewalk? Who shovels it in winter?
Right now, the people who are, who are owning it are obligated to do that, just like. They're obligated to mow it and keep the lots mowed also, so. The third, the third page is the High Point. There's five 1s and one 2, but the five 1s are owned by the developer. The 2 is owned by somebody who bought it within the last two years. I guess a little bit more than two years ago.
Right. So the developers, and that's what we've kind of talked about, talked about, is how it came to the 50/50, was 2011 is when it shifted from the developer having to put in the sidewalk to the property owner that builds a house putting in a sidewalk. So for the time these have been built, that was kind of the premise, was once a house was built, sidewalk could go in. Well, now we're kind of changing that position with the resolution that was adopted in 21. I don't know that I really care for that personally, because I do believe we had that situation sit, and we're going to change it. They are marketing them to be sold. It's not a great economy, and granted, they've had them for quite some time now, but we looked at that, decided if we were going to force the issue to be put in, then we should probably cover half. And that's why you'll see these are the 50/50 lots, because again, the developers at time when they developed, did not believe they'd have to put in the sidewalk in 2011 when it changed. So that's something for you to kind of discuss as well. We just want to bring the points up, is what our concerns are, what our recommendations would be, but you have the final say on, do we proceed with this forward or not, as lots that we would want to pursue, having infill done.
Is a qualification of those conditions that it's being actively marketed?
Not really. That's just one of those things that if, if somebody isn't doing it, it's easier to say, let's push on getting the sidewalks installed. If they are marketing them and they just haven't been able to sell them, it seems to be a different situation. And with, with developers, at this point, you know, we'd like to think that we don't have enough lots, but yet when we have the lots, we don't always get them sold, so people are not pulling the trigger. You know, there's, there's various reasons, but we're going to end up with the same situation a couple of years when whitetail it. They're not going to build out that entire subdivision that quickly either, and so you put another impediment on the developer, and I'm a little concerned about being an obstacle to getting more lots developed. And I understand that there are times when you just have a few left and you just want to get that done, but you know, there's a, these are in a section at the end of the road where they pretty much build everything else up, so. That's another one of those that the only way to, to really, when they, if they contest that, they could actually say, why should I pay anything? And if somebody challenged that, it could be as much as 100% or 50%. 50% is the only court case the Supreme Court's decided in the state regarding this, and they went with 50/50, so, at that time. So that's kind of why we defaulted to that. It could also be deferred if they ask you, I mean, that's one of those things that'll happen on the 20th, is they could ask for deferment and make an appeal for a deferment, so, and just basically move it to the next year or the next two years, whichever way, next time you review it.
And as far as we know, all those lots are being, you know, they have for sale signs, they're being marketed?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
How many total lots would the city be paying 50% on?
11.
11. And so, let's just say an average, what, 80-foot wide lot? You know, if that's average or not? What would, what would a lot roughly cost to put a sidewalk in?
That's on the preliminary assessment schedule.
Yeah.
It's a little hard to read, because it's.
Some, you know, between, you know, they're like 2,500 to about 4,500, or 4,500, depending on the length. It's all linear foot, so. One of the things that they argue about this is, when you put the sidewalk in, it's likely that it might have to be replaced again when we do a house, depending on access to the lot and digging it and all that, so it's a, if, if nobody's building on it, then it's one thing to have the sidewalks, you can use it for public use. If they sell it the next year, or build something two years from now, then the sidewalk is kind of worthless.
You know, I, I have some real hesitation about making the developers who have lots that are in their inventory put sidewalks on them, even with the city paying for half of it. I, I think it really discourages the development of those, probably not to a great degree, but as another expense that these companies are going to have to have when they're putting in those lots. When you're buying a house, but as a consumer, and I'm buying a lot to put a new house on it, and it's in a new development, I'm going to expect that there are going to be lots that are not developed and will not have sidewalks or that kind of infrastructure in it. That's basically something that I think I would anticipate if I'm buying a lot in that area. And I think the idea that, yes, you put in a sidewalk in, a year later, the lot gets sold, a lot of the sidewalk's going to end up getting destroyed during the building operation, you know, heavy equipment being moved over, it's going to have to be replaced and all of that, plus the fact, I mean, I, I think it's absolutely fair for the city to pay it for at least 50% of that, but we're looking at a fairly substantial amount of money the city's going to be investing in that. My concern with this whole sidewalk thing, and I'm going to put this frankly, isn't with the builders or the developers. My whole concern is with some, one, a consumer who buys a lot and then sits on it. Buys a lot as an investment, or maybe buys a lot as some kind of a, just a hedge or something, and, and, you know, at that point, then, they become the person who is responsible for that lot. It's no longer a business inventory, it's their personal property, and I think they've got as much responsibility to put in a sidewalk, mow the weeds, and do everything else in it, that they would if they had a house on that property, except for the fact that they just don't have a house on it. So that's why I was, I'm very much in favor of having people who buy house, who buy lots, they're not developers, they're buying it either because they, at some point, they want to put a house on it, or they're simply buying it as an investment, or they're buying it to control the property next to the house they already have, or they're buying it to have another, another lot, so that they have more elbow room, whatever, but they're a consumer of that lot, and they should be doing all of the things they need to do as an owner. And that includes putting in a sidewalk. So I have no problem with the way that this is designed for Sections 2 and 3, but I am not at all in favor of going ahead with the ones we've identified as number one, they're still owned by the developers. Even if the developer ends up taking five, 10, 15 years to sell that lot, it's still an inventory of a business, and I have a really hard time forcing the developer to spend that money and put in a sidewalk, not to mention the fact, the city's cost on, on matching that. I don't know if it'd be appropriate at this point to make a resolution to amend that, or what the procedure would be, but.
I guess, I guess I don't see the difference between a developer owning a lot and not having it built on, and an individual buying it and owning it and not building on it. Either way, it's not being built on. The people that have purchased homes and built homes in that area now have to consider walking out in the street to get around on these lots, you know, because they don't have sidewalks going through. I think other businesses that get inventory that they're not able to sell don't get to just sit there and not pay anything for those. There, there's, there's a cost effective to having inventory that isn't developed, isn't sold on. So to me, that's, that's a potential risk of doing business. It's not like we're saying, you just took this development out and you haven't built anything in the year. This is five, 10, 15 years. So we're, we are talking a considerable amount of time as opposed to an immediate turnaround on this.
I completely understand what you're saying, I just don't agree with it. I'm coming from a, from a different direction. That's why we vote on these things.
Yeah, I just, to me, it's, whether it's a developer buying it, sell it to another developer that sits on it, do they become the individual owner of that lot, or are they another developer now, still? And still sitting it as a developer and immune from having to put in a sidewalk?
Well, and then you have people transferring or selling to one developer, to another, or back to, I mean, I don't know what that hap, you know, and so they're sitting there playing a game of, okay, well, I've sold it, so now my time starts over. And really, they're just selling it to their brother or sister that owns, you know, part of this or something.
Yeah, and the interest that we have is that there's connected sidewalks through neighborhoods, so we don't have pedestrians walking.
And I get that, because I'm one of those people that like to walk on sidewalks, and when I'm pushing a stroller with kids in it, I don't want to all of a sudden have to go into the street for one lot and then come back up on the sidewalk. It's, it's ridiculous. However, I do see Ross' point of, here we are putting undeveloped, putting sidewalks in undeveloped areas, and that's just a waste to say, okay, now we have, now somebody has to maintain the sidewalk, and someone has to, and it might be broke up when somebody does actually develop on it. What a waste. I don't want to see that happen.
I have a hard time thinking, like, Statey Construction's going to send two guys over that could be doing something else to shovel a sidewalk really fast, kind of whatever lots that they own in town that haven't sold.
That's part of the issue that we come across as well. You know, like I said, in 2011, we put the issue onto the property owner, not the developer. And so now we're going back to say, no, we're going to have you do it anyway. And that's where we struggle with it also. So we're bringing this to you because it qualifies under the ordinance of 2121. And again, as we said, if we force the issue 50/50.
And again, as we said, if we force the issue, 50/50 is what we took to you, but whether or not you want to go forward is up to you. I think, you answered your question earlier, Rod, I think it would be appropriate once we walk through each of these sections and council makes a motion for it, or it may be, then you can hammer out what goes through, what doesn't go through, votes yes, no, et cetera. But we'll continue if it's okay to walk through the other issues and then let's just kind of have that discussion if that works.
Could I ask one question before you get too deep? What do other communities do?
I don't know what other communities do. I mean, are you talking about Waki, who's selling 50 houses a day? Are you talking about?
No, I'm talking about other communities like Waverly.
Well, I don't know. I haven't called like Storm Lake and Pella and Sioux Center. And I mean, it's, I guess I focus on what do we want to do here in Waverly versus what some other city may or may not do because they may have different requirements, different issues, different financial abilities or lack. We were just trying to focus on what do we want to do in this community. Maybe they don't believe in walkability in some other city. Maybe they don't have that issue that they want to do. If you do here and this site you want to handle it, then that's what I would look at. It's not something I guess I would compare. If you want me to, I can certainly make the calls.
Well, the reason that I asked is not because I want to give you more work, it's because I'm thinking, we're talking about this, at least one of the perspectives for consideration is are we encouraging or discouraging development? And so if I'm a potential developer and I'm looking at 10 different communities in Iowa and where do I want to put my business, I would want to be comparing apples to apples.
I think it's easy to tell who the developer is. We're saying, well, what if they pass this property back and forth? Developer wants to sell the lot. That's how they make their money, it's by selling the lot. They don't want to hang on to it. If they're hanging on to the lot, they're not making money. They've got money tied up in the, in the property. They've got money tied up in whatever improvements they've put into it. They want to sell the lot. You have a, someone else that buys that lot and is holding it, they're not holding it with the intention of selling it. They're holding it because they're holding it for some other reason, because it's next to their property. They want to control the property, they wanted it as investment or whatever. Developers in the business of developing and selling lots. So I think it's really easy to say, this is a developer, these are lots, he's just had a bad time trying to sell it, hasn't been able to sell them yet. I don't really want to stick that guy with, the developer with another expense in, in, on top of what he's already put into developing that lot. And we'll, we'll discuss this later in short.
Well, I think you can be in favor of walkability, plus want economic development and plus not want to waste $10,000, $10,000, $20,000 of city money on concrete that's going to get tore up when it gets sold. And I think if you're, having been a person that in my previous life bought a lot and held on to it, not for investment because eventually I thought I would build on it, I did whatever the property association told me to do, right? Sprayed weeds, did the sidewalk, did whatever, because those were the rules, paid the dues, whatever. It wasn't a city property, you know, a city issue, but you know, so I, I agree with most of what Rod said. I think it's hard to, to go, to reverse course with these developers if they are trying to market them. But I also see what Heather said, you know, if you're walking, it is a hassle, but a lot of times you have to get out of it, get off the sidewalk because people have their campers and cars and whatever parked across the sidewalk. So I'm used to going in and out of the sidewalk, but it's a, it's a difficult decision because we can be in favor of all those things. We still have to vote, so.
Well, and all cities do have to follow the same chapter, same code of law. So it's not as if we're doing something unique, we are following the code as outlined. It's just the process of whether or not you want to enforce or push. That's what we're really getting to today.
In that Supreme Court case that, that I talked about previously, it, it was a case that was decided in that timeframe when people were just figuring it out because they were using, trying to use other means of doing it. And so if you're using infill, you have to use the, the benefit analysis because that allows them to say, well, if you really want it, you can put it in, that kind of thing. So and there's, there's situations where that's appropriate when you, somebody's just not doing anything and eventually say, we're just going to put it in no matter what it costs us because it's fair to the neighborhood. It's, it's really a judgment call. And I think we need to clarify our, our ordinance to make that clear.
So on the first page of your map, the, the blue exempt lots, those are exempt because of how the ordinance is written or because of the length of ownership?
The resolution from 21.
21, okay.
Because there's three in a row.
Right.
I mean, I suppose, I'm looking at that same sheet where you've got 1051, 1055, and then you have the okay.
There's a house there now.
And there's a house there now. And that house was built, what, in the last year, two years?
Finished this year or last year.
This year. So, so those two next to it, before that house was there, would have been exempt.
Correct.
But the requirement is basically brand spanking new because that house got built, boom, there's, kicks in. There's no delay for them to kind of get caught up. In the ordinance, there's something about a time delay where it has to have sit undeveloped for a certain amount of, like, when a new business owner takes over, they have so many years to build and put in the sidewalk. So when a new owner, like there, there's on another sheet where someone just bought a lot and they've got, what, is it two years, three years?
I think that's what is in the resolution, that's where you set the criteria.
Yeah.
But that isn't in the ordinance. The ordinance is just that you're going to review.
Okay, that we're going to review. But, but, right. So, but there is kind of this criteria where we say if you buy it, you have like, is it two or is it three years?
Two.
Two years. So for those two lots, are they within, was it like, as if a new owner took in like the two years? Or is it less than that?
Because the, the pure definition of your, of the criteria was if somebody owns it and they haven't owned it more than two years, then you're not supposed to include that.
Right. So, so these, while it's not a new owner, it is what I would call a new situation. Where before that time, they were exempt and they are within kind of two years of having lost their exemption.
Yep.
So I think that's kind of a different situation than a lot that sat empty, like two or one adjoining lot that sat empty for four or more years, where we're saying, you know, you know, get moving.
One of those lots that we talked about in 21, that had been empty, that hadn't been built on for eight years or seven years. That was one of those obvious ones because the neighbors really wanted that sidewalk in. Well, then they sold it to somebody else because they weren't going to put a house in there anyway. It was a brilliant investment.
Speculation.
As, as far as we know, the new people, we don't know what they're doing.
Right.
Because people do buy lots and say, well, maybe five years from now I can, I can build a house. That's where you, that's the gray area.
Right. But we are putting a limit on, you have kind of three years to make up your mind what you're going to do.
So that lot will eventually come onto this list, just as he's did.
Right.
It's a threshold according to your resolution. It will now be reviewed just like all the others. So.
I mean, I suppose, I, I feel like I'm kind of halfway between Tim and Rod in that I'd kind of like to see our resolution pass, expecting these people to put in sidewalks, but then if they come and complain and ask for a deferment, I'm more likely to be very generous with those deferments. But I want to kind of see, you know, what, what their feelings are on it. Is this something like, you know, that they're very upset about having to put in sidewalks? Or they kind of admit that, you know, the rest of the neighbors kind of want those sidewalks in? And when we have these developments, they, they're responsible for a lot of those existing properties that are already there. So you know, they may want to, you know, maintain the community where people want to live there.
I can also tell you that those lots that people buy that are just people that want to invest in the future, don't tend to do a very good job of maintaining those lots for the people around them either. They, they do their best, but you know, they're not there every day. So we don't know when it's long enough. We do a lot of calling for people to say, you can get yourself a lot then. But that's not, you know, we need to establish that timeframe that you're going to say, this is our, you know, is it two years, is it three years? And then put it in the code section in the ordinance to say, if you, if a person other than the developer buys the lot, they have two years or three years in which to pull a permit and complete the building. Or they have to put the sidewalk in. So I think those, those work.
We keep interrupting you. Did you want to finish?
Hmm, finish.
Sorry.
So second category.
Second category is, that one's the one we talked about, we're, we're talking about right now. So really when it comes down to it, does not immediately begin development. And you can see my differences here. The first two have been owned for, since 2005. And the third one has been owned for two and a half years. So there's a difference in that category depending upon the length of time in which it's been held. And that's, and I don't know if it's always easy to say it's two years or maybe somebody comes in and says, well, we're going to, but interest rates went up and now we're waiting a year or two. Something of that nature, which kind of puts it on them to come in and ask for the deferment. So that's why I did mention that deferment in that situation. The third one is the, is I call the easy one because in my mind, if someone buys two lots and they build on one of them, but they maintain the other one as a, as a lawn or as a grounds or things around them and they're maintaining it and mowing it just like they mowed their own lawn, they basically should be putting the sidewalk around all sides for that lot. So.
Are you, are you on the rolling meadows page? Which page are you on?
So number three is, should be page four.
Rolling Hills, Rolling Hills 22 is one of them.
Yep, yep.
This one, okay.
Rolling Meadows is the number two and then Rolling Hills is number, is the next page. And.
Got it, thank you.
And by the way, I, I added the city lot because it, it doesn't have a connection across our lot and go across the street. So I think we should do that if we're making somebody down the street put their lots in.
Which one are you talking about?
That's on rolling meadows. It should be number four.
Oh, next one.
It would just, it would just establish the loop because we put a, a pet ramp on both sides of that so that people can cross over. And that would complete that subdivision pretty much for what we need to do.
In the past, we wouldn't have done it because it doesn't go anywhere. It just loops back into the street where it came out of. But in all fairness, we are going to do this, we'll link that as well. Because there are some other ones that actually go into a cornfield. And so in the past, it has not been pursued to take that there, but once you get so many of those, you do have to do it. So this would be ours and we would get done as well.
So the third one, you, you see some, there are obviously lots that could be developed on, but people have chosen to hide them behind them and not, and they put, one of them has a sidewalk that they put on one side. We just want to finish that sidewalk now that there's a reason to complete the 12th Street sidewalk. Since there's people that still live on the south, otherwise they're isolated. And then the fourth, yeah, the one, Copper Terrace is an easy one too. That's another, again, a tracing lot. So the fourth one is what I call something anywhere in the community where you find some, a sidewalk connection that made sense if you did it, it would really be useful and helpful for the, for the neighbors in the neighborhood. And that's the, on Country Meadows Drive, number four. It's a, it's the last section of kind of a loop section, both sides of Country Meadows Drive, that is not, does not have a sidewalk section. So people cannot use that. We kind of use the rationale from the Supreme Court case that talked about, if you have an extra wide lot, the public benefit is bigger because you're really only using the kind of a lot size in front of you. So we allocated 34% for the landowner and 66% for the city because we're picking up the two thirds of that basically. So that was how we did that. And other situations are going to all be different. If you have a place where you, you just need that half a block or you need the two, two lots or something that could, should be done and you wanted to do it and not try to just get it done, then we could do that in other parts of the community. Because it doesn't require it to be in a subdivision that requires a sidewalk. We can, you know, the city can do that for public benefit. And that was the one that was obvious for us.
You do make note on this in the summary too, because this is, you know, Bill Strohm's house. And, you know, that property, the buildings and house and everything were on it before the subdivision was ever done. So the subdivision was basically developed around that property. So I think it makes some sense that we're going to require them to put in a sidewalk that we contribute to the, the cost of that since it is, you know, kind of after the fact, plus it is such a large area.
It's about three lots wide. Yeah, so we came up, the one third would be their middle, we'd have the other two, that would complete it then.
But it would just be on this, on the Country Meadows side, it's not on the 12th Street side, right?
Correct.
Just, just number four.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Oh yeah, yeah, there's nothing on 12th Street, yes.
So that's our scenarios. So now feel free to do what you all do.
I don't, I don't want to make developers pay for putting in sidewalks.
So the way I anticipated this is that if you did, you could make, this is a preliminary assessment schedule. And if you ask me to remove the developers, we can still, you can pass it with the, with the change that we're going to kick that out, they take those out. And then somebody else could ask for a deferment. The people that are left in still could still come before you and ask for a deferment or for a different benefit calculation.
I guess my only comment about developers is I think they need to be actively marketing them. You know, whether that's on Zillow, on, with signs up, et cetera, that if they're in the business of selling lots then they ought to be attempting to sell them.
I, I believe that all of them had a sign on them, or at least most of them had a sign on it. When I looked on, on Beacon and we looked at the maps from July of last year.
It, it's hard to put your finger on intent though, because you say, well, is it your intention to market the lot? I mean, they're developers, that, that's what they do. And you know, I think it's hard for us as a council to say, okay, you have to be doing, you're going to have to have a sign on it, you have to have it in your ads, you have to do this. I'm not sure I want to go that far. I, I understand what you're saying.
We don't, we don't have a way to distinguish though, people who are hanging on to a piece of property as an investment with, with thoughts about maybe reselling it in the future. And so most of those people aren't marketing it.
The developer is the people, is the company that bought the land, they have the, they, they platted the property, they put in the improvements and now they're selling it and they're in the business of selling that lot to make money. If I'm just buying a lot because I think the price of lots are going to go up, then I'm not a developer, I'm, I'm an investor. So I, I think there's a very clear distinction between those two groups. And I, I just don't want to have the, the, the company or individual who is actually preparing the lots for sale on the market. You know, buying the land, doing the plating, having everything zoned out, getting all of that stuff done so that they can put in lots, streets and everything else and sell the lots at a profit. That's what a developer does. I don't want to put the extra burden on a developer that says, hey, if you're not getting these lots sold within a couple of years, we're also going to make you put a sidewalk on it.
Yeah, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying I think they ought to be trying to sell them.
I guess, to me, there's.
I agree, I just don't know how you do that.
To me, there is a risk of doing business. And if we try to take away the risk of doing business to everybody for everything, we're going to need to go to other businesses and say, we understand you have a risk that you're not being able to capitalize on. We're going to relieve you of that burden. And I don't think that's what our role is. Our role is what's best for the community. And the community as a whole, I think, deserves some of these. And I think there are places elsewhere in town that we haven't even touched yet where there are sidewalks that are not completed or there are gaps that haven't been filled in. We went through a sidewalk program and fixed existing sidewalks, but there were places even in those areas of the city where there aren't sidewalks. Like the one that I bring up constantly is on my street, Cedar River Drive, if you go down towards Seventh Avenue, on the east side of the street, you go past the apartment buildings, going down the hill, the sidewalk stops halfway down the hill. And that lot at the very bottom of the hill, there's no sidewalk for that entire lot, all the way down to the corner. But we did put in a, put a pet ramp on that corner. It's just a solo pet ramp on the corner, not attached to any sidewalks. It's just a pet ramp.
Because we do try to put the pet ramps on when they're developing the streets.
But we haven't done anything about filling, finishing that sidewalk.
And again.
Because it wasn't put in when they, they developed it. And we haven't made them put it in since we fixed all those sidewalks, eight, 10 years ago now. And it's still, you know, I don't know if, I was a kid, I might think that was kind of cool as a bike riding ramp to jump off. But, because I mean, there's, the sidewalk is about six inches above, above the ground of the one that's there and where it stops. So we have those places and then we have other places in town where perhaps we'd want to put sidewalk in, maybe not as much now. I know the one we talked about several years ago was getting sidewalk in over by West Cedar, but with the. but with the school moving out, it's probably not a necessary thing to, to put in a sidewalk leading to the school because the school's not going to be there. But those are, those are other discussions that we haven't had yet, but there are other places in town, I know that, where there are these gaps that are just, we have to go out in the street and go around to, to do it because there's nothing there.
Well, on this, I'm, I'm conflicted and trying to find consensus over here, I'm not, I'm getting little bits and pieces here, but I, I don't think developers should, should have to front that at all. I agree with Rod on that. I, I don't like the 50-50. I mean, it does make sense, like in the Hickory Heights instance, that one makes sense for an exemption on what I've said there. Yeah, I'll, I'll continue to listen here, but this, this is kind of a tough one. I, I guess to make it easier, I would be more comfortable maybe widening out that two-year exemption out a little bit, and I think that, you know, is, is a little bit more careful to the situation, but they, they have to get done at the same time, so.
You mean for the private owners or the?
Yeah.
Well, we can revamp the ordinance, revamp the resolution, this is just bringing you as it sits today. We have no problem going back and taking a look at it, letting you decide different timeframes, we're just wanting to accomplish this today. And I don't disagree with Tim, we'll get after him, be right on that one. There are other sections that have that, and those are projects that we've talked about as well. These are easier, being subdivision, et cetera, or something in the pocket that's obvious. But there are other areas, whether it be sidewalks by the schools, sidewalks in other parts of the neighborhood that were once there, removed, now replaced. We're trying to get a handle on all of it, and this was just a section we wanted to hit at this point in time. But we have other projects that we could start to incorporate those other areas in and try to force that issue as well.
Can you send us a copy of the ordinance? Or, because I don't think, did you include the?
It's on page two of the.
Resolution.
Twenty-one, twenty-one.
Oh, okay, okay.
I mean, so I think that we have consensus on numbers two, three, and four, that I think that we kind of agree that those categories two, three, and four, we would like to see those sidewalks filled in as, as described. I think where we're butting heads is over the number one criteria. And, and I agree that it's a tough decision. I mean, part of it is I'm looking at some of these lots, and, so we have these two lots, and the, and the house next to them was built in the last two years. So that's a case where we can say, they're actively building, they're actively working to fill that in. If we have a case where there's a lot that's been vacant for five years and there's no movement on it, that's where I might feel some pressure to sell, tell that developer, yeah, you got to fill in the sidewalk. But a lot of these, like, one or two empty lots, you know, it only recently became, came under this rule because of a new lot that was built. So those are cases where I'm much more willing to give the developer the benefit of the doubt that they're making progress towards filling that in. And I, I would love, I mean, I think the developers want to sell the house, and then if someone's building a house, then they're putting in that sidewalk and it's not costing the city anything, which, from our point of view, it makes sense to give the developer the benefit of the doubt to avoid having to pay 50% of that sidewalk.
I agree, I think the developer question, I find myself, I could be persuaded on either side of that, but I think if we're going to include the developers in the requirements, we need to have careful definition of what a developer is. Because I know the comment was made, well, we all know who the developers are. Yeah, but 20 years from now, you know, we need to be writing this so that it's going to be clear going forward and we don't have to rehash this every two years.
And clearly, when we, we see the developer, we, we mean the person who built the streets, paid for the streets, paid for everything, because it's not just another developer that picks it up. Although it's still relevant because they would have paid them off probably and buy a lot with, but we have builders that buy lots too, that's a different situation, that's more like, they're, they're usually doing it for a specific purpose.
Right.
Doing a, a house to, to actually sell, so.
Right.
I, I think it's, I think it's easy to, we need to tweak the, the ordinance and the way we do that so that we can put some pressure on some of these that need to do them without having to worry about whether we're not going to get, not to get the money back from the person who owns the lot. Developers eventually are going to have to say, hey, you, you just have to lower your price or you're going to have to push harder if you're the last two lots in this subdivision.
So how should we proceed if we want to say, have you go back and rework the ordinance to account for developers, and then proceed on these categories two, three, and four with the, the sidewalk infill?
Well, I would still need to reference what you're going to do with regards to the two, three, because those are still, we're support, we're supposing that we can get 100% because they're actually have completed properties or they've let them sit there for 10 or 15 years. So those are different situations, I think, that pulls more in favor of assessing them the, the benefits, making them pay for those. I still can't tell you, guarantee you that if somebody challenges this in two weeks, that they aren't going to get, they can take it to a district judge and ask for, and they could try the case and say, well, I think you can only get 50% from them too. So that, so there's language that isn't easy to get around. It's just never a guarantee when you're making, when you're going in and doing this under this chapter, because this chapter is all about, it's, the subdivision ordinance lets us force them to do the sidewalk when they build a house. It doesn't force people to build a sidewalk in areas where you never made them do sidewalks in the past.
I question someone who's going to spend more money on a lawyer than they are on a sidewalk, but.
Have a principle.
You've got to have money to do it too, I suppose.
So what, what do you need from us now at this point, what, how do we proceed?
If you're going to go forward without the ones, then I think you could just ask us to amend that, and we wouldn't have to start over, I don't think, again, because we're really just taking out, because we would just remove those from the, from the preliminary schedule.
Right. So, I mean, I can make the motion if that's what.
I think we could still approve this.
I'm not sure it'll, it'll, it will pass, but if I made, is it appropriate, I guess what I'm asking, is it appropriate at this point, is, is it in, to, to make a motion to remove, I'm not even sure what the, what the motion would say, to remove the enforcement of the resolution?
So, the first, the first resolution is really just a resolution saying we're going to do a project this year and do some infill, okay? So that's the main part of it. And it talks about the preliminary schedule, so if you say, but your proposed preliminary schedule needs to remove these 11 properties.
Okay.
And that's what you asked to, to approve.
All right.
Because then we would just remove it from the schedule and the schedule, you'd amend the schedule by removing those 11 properties.
All right.
And remember, the, the resolution is just that we will consider this, it isn't that we're going to do it in a certain, that we're obligated to force these people to put in sidewalks.
Right.
So we are in fact considering it.
Because that decision has to be made in two weeks after, with the resolution of necessity.
Right, a public hearing, the whole thing.
All right, now I'm confused again as to what, what we need to do to go forward.
We just approve this, we just approve this resolution.
Project.
And then at what point do we kind of remove these?
On the 20th.
Amendment.
So what we, what we do on the, on the schedule is, the schedule's supposed to be kept in the clerk's office for people to review and we send it out. By that time, it's going to be corrected, or it's going to be changed. It won't have those 11 properties if that's what you're asking me to remove.
Okay.
So that would be the schedule that is taken forward to the 20th.
So you recommend that we do an amendment to say we want to remove Section 1 that includes those 11 properties, or just, just remove those properties?
Just use that language to remove the 11, the 11 properties that are shown in Section 1.
And then vote on that to see if that passes, and then move forward with the, the next vote.
Well, yeah, well, I think you can do it all at once if you want to do it all at once.
So you could do the motion as it's stated and then at the end just put, with the removal of the 11 lots, so.
So that would be an amendment to the motion though?
That would be an amendment.
And we would want to vote on that amendment?
What Bill's saying is you wouldn't have to, you just direct staff to remove those 11?
Okay.
We could do that outside of the.
The schedule would be the part that has the.
I think we need a vote on that.
But I, I think it would make sense to have the amendment.
It's fine to do a vote on each, each item if you want to do it. I mean, if you want to do a vote to, to remove the 10 items.
11.
11.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm going to move that we remove those 11 properties identified as number one from the preliminary assessment schedule.
I will second that amendment.
Got a motion and a second, council discussion on that.
You really want more discussion?
I just have to throw it out there. And I think it would behoove us to do a roll call for the record.
Kangas.
No.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Burgin.
Yes.
Boefor.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
With a vote of six to one, none absent the amendment or the direction approved. We still have the resolution 23-33, which that would be a part, would have been a part of, or would be a part of, it's there. So any further discussion, knowing that that, what's just passed is part of that. Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Boefor.
Yes.
Burgin.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
With a seven to zero, and none absent resolution 23-33 with the element added, is approved. Item two is the resolution 23-34, adopting preliminary plans, estimated costs, plats, lot valuations, and schedule for the construction of sidewalk improvements on infill lots and setting a public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution 23-34, adopting preliminary plans, estimated costs, plats, lot valuations, and schedule for the construction of sidewalk improvements on infill lots and setting a public hearing on March 20, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, excuse me, of City Hall to receive input from the property owner subject to assessment and interested parties for or against the improvements, the cost, the assessment, the boundaries of the project area, or the final adoption of the resolution of necessity.
Second.
Motion by Drinkhouse, second by Myers, council discussion.
I'm tired just here.
That was long.
And you'll consider the, the amended schedule for this purpose.
Okay, so I feel really bad saying this because this is one of the properties that we removed, but again, that 509 tumbleweed, 1801 clover, if I'm looking at your lineal feet that you've got listed, I don't think it includes the whole corner. So you've only got 120 linear feet on that, and I don't think you're going all the way around to the, was it the east side of the property?
If and when we put that back on.
Exactly, so it's like, I, I know that's one of the properties that we're not considering, but I'm telling you, you know, watch that next time.
Anything further? I'll wait for Rod. His whistle went.
He needs to drink after all that motioning.
All right.
Roll call Carla.
Rothie.
Uh, yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Boefor.
Yes.
Burgin.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Myers.
With a seven to zero, and zero absent resolution 23-34 is approved. Item three is the third and final reading of ordinance 1119, adding and removing certain traffic control devices or measures on streets in Waverly. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance 1119, adding and removing certain traffic control devices or measures on streets in Waverly.
Second.
Motion by Burgin, second by Kangas, council discussion, I'm sure Mr. Burgin has a comment.
I'm, I'm waiting to see if somebody else does.
I think you'd be three for three if you make it.
I thought Tim did it the first time. Okay. This is not putting traffic cameras.
Traffic violation cameras.
It's not controversial, it's making sure we have the ones that have signs in here and the ones that don't have signs out of here, so.
The answer is no, there's no traffic.
No, no traffic cameras.
Anything further? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Boefor.
Yes.
Burgin.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
With a seven to zero, third and final reading of ordinance 1119 is approved. Item four is the third and final reading of ordinance 1120, amending Section 100.4.06, Section 100.13, and Section 100.15 of the Waverly Municipal Code.
Second.
Motion by Drinkhouse, second by Burgin, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Boefor.
Yes.
Burgin.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
With a seven to zero, the third and final reading of ordinance 1120 is approved. Item five, resolution 23-36, approving the proposal and awarding the contract for wastewater biosolids removal for Wolf &amp; Cool Injection and Pumping Incorporated, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution 23-36, approving the proposal from and awarding the contract for wastewater biosolids removal to Wolf &amp; Cool Injection and Pumping Inc. of Piazza Iowa in the amount of .0538 per gallon per year for three years, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Rothie, council discussion.
I see this is a potential vendor change here if we pass this. What was our, do we know what our rate was, 22 and back?
Four and a quarter cents per gallon, is what it was prior.
So it did go up, and we have a lot more we're putting out too, right, with the new facility?
There was also some caveat to that, there was additional charges we had on top of that, some delivery of equipment. The previous RFP was very vague, so they were able to get some of those charges and we have better capabilities with the new improvements at WPC facility, so.
So it's 045 with asterixes?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Anything further? Roll call Carla.
Burgin.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Boefor.
Yes.
With a seven to zero, resolution 23-36 is approved. Item six, resolution 23-37, resolution appointing UMB Bank, North America of West Des Moines, Iowa, to serve as paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement.
I'll move approval of resolution 23-37, resolution appointing UMB Bank, N.A. of West Des Moines, Iowa, to serve as paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement. Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Rothie, council discussion.
James, could you translate that?
Sure.
What exactly they'll be doing?
When we process our bonds for payment each year, we don't actually do that ourselves. We have an organization, and it's usually been UMB Bank who's been extremely good to work with, who does that for us. So they make sure our bonds are registered, the feds, that we are correct in those paperwork. They do the transfers as needed, and as it says, they make the payments for us on the interest payments, coupons, whatever may need to be done. And so we do not do it in-house. Significantly larger cities might do that in-house because they have a staff or division for that. We've chosen to have UMB Bank instead do it, it's a more efficient way for us to handle that.
Do they make, like, money on the float then, or how do they?
On a seven to zero, Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-seven is approved. Item seven, Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-eight, a resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of one-point-five million dollars, local option sales and service tax revenue bonds, taxable Series twenty-twenty-three, of the City of Waverly, State of Iowa, and the provisions of the Code of Iowa, providing for method of payment of the bonds. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-eight, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. Further counsel discussion? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Kangus.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bofor.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
On a seven to zero, Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-eight is approved. Section L, reports from boards and commissions, one item from leisure services, the commission minutes of January nineteenth of twenty-twenty-three received into the record. Section M, staff updates.
Sir, we have a fee today.
All right.
Just a quick update. Yardway site tentatively is opening March twenty-seventh. So we've had, received quite a few calls. Get a little nice weather. Everyone's a lion. He's just to get out there, so.
Thank you.
I think it's all we have tonight, sir.
All right. Thank you. Move forward with counsel comments. Myers, Mr. Bergen?
I was, well, normally I wouldn't say this. I was very happy to see Warburg crushing hope over the weekend. They will be, women's basketball game is continuing to play, so look forward to them going out to Massachusetts on Friday. And, let's see, I did want to encourage people to get out and vote tomorrow. There is a resolution on the ballot for funding our community colleges. And those are very important for, you know, a need, when we have a need for more certification and more tradespeople working, this is one way that we can help improve our local economy. So kind of, I would encourage people to get out and vote for that recertification of the community colleges. And anyone who would like to join me after city council meeting to discuss politics, you can join me for a beer at the beach house.
So when does Warburg play the Dreams?
They play, Friday we play, oh, the Crush the Dreams. Yeah, because Crushing Hope isn't enough.
Exactly. Mr. Schneider. Nothing?
Nothing.
Mr. Drankow?
I think I've pretty much lost my voice. Nothing more.
So Rothie?
Nothing.
Bofor?
Nothing.
Seagulls.
Nothing.
Let's put you on the spot. All right. Mr. Kangus?
Nothing.
All right. I don't have anything either at this point in time, so we'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Kangus, second by Schneider. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.